Good evening. Bill Hardy, moderator for the town hall. I will do this, so this is a special meeting Tuesday, November 17, 2020. And then 12:20, please, for me. This is gonna drive me crazy. Before we go to the last bit of... Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby directed to notify everyone in habit of said town qualified to vote in elections and the town fears to meet at Tetasco Regional High School in the auditorium okay at 319 Brookfield Road, Sturridge, Mass. 01566 as noted by the Board of Select in pursuit to its authority under section nine of chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020 on Tuesday, 17th of November in the year 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Actually, it's 6:09, then in the year to act on the following articles. Can we all stand, say a pledge allegiance to the flag? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for my nation, my God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, just a couple housekeeping things. Anyone that is going to speak for us or needs to be a town voter, in order to vote tonight, you must have one of the paddles that they handed up when you sign in. I hope everyone has a copy of the article, of the warrant that we're gonna be going over. If anyone has, when it's time for questions, if you can please come in, line up, keep six foot apart, and if you use these microphones, when you're done speaking, there's some wipes down there, you can just wipe off the microphone, throw it into your wastebasket and then we'll go on from there. When you do vote to speak, give your name and address. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow a sum of money to cover the $8,800 deficit in fund 295 Green Communities State Grant Account or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Have I a motion to move to a right, yes, to raise and appropriate $8,800? Okay. Do I have a second? Second, okay. Any questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow a sum of money to cover the $292.98 deficit in fund 284 MEMA Certification Grant Account or take any other action relative thereto. This is, by the way, would be a raise and appropriate. All, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer the balance of Fund 907, the Deputy Collector Reimbursement Account, as of the end of fiscal year 20, to Fire Department Equipment Account for firefighter turnout here or take any other action relative thereto. Okay, so what I, do I have a motion?
To move.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, to move.
Yes, do I have a second? I agree that it was probably a motion to indefinitely postpone this article because it's a duplicate of another article.
To indefinitely postpone Article three.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So this is just being postponed, this is indefinitely postponed because it's a duplicate of what's coming up, so it's not gonna, instead of voting twice, it's gonna be voted further on in another article. It's just, it's just a duplicate article. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? That's indefinitely postponed. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow a sum of money approximately $4,240 to treat the milfoil in Hamilton, Reg., with a chemical called Procellicor, including all costs incidental related thereto, to take any other, any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Do I have a second? This is to raise and appropriate. Any questions? Yes, sir, come up to the microphone, please, give your name and address. And when you come up to speak, you can take your mask off so we can hear you, it's not muffled.
Park County, 2 North Leash Drive. I'm with the Lake Association, and what we want to do is treat a small area of Union with this new chemical, Procellicor. Procellicor has a lot of advantages, and that only needs to be treated every three to four years. The current herbicide we use, Daquat, requires yearly treatments. It's becoming less and less effective, and so we're hoping that as successful, this will be alternative for the future.
Could you might wipe off the microphone when you're done? Yes, ma'am.
Dorothy Behrens, 12 Brayden Street, Chair of Lake Oversight Committee. We support this with this type of chemical. It's supposed to be more effective, but we feel by just testing one area, we'll be able to make sure that it is the chemical that we want. The Lake Oversight Committee had many calls late this summer from lake owners saying that milfoil had come back early and that it was very ineffective this year of treatment. So we've spoken to other lakes, it's very effective. It is a little more expensive, but because you only need to use it every three or four years, in the long run, we'll be saving money. So LOC does support this.
Who? Yes, sir.
Kevin Palmer, Sinsel Bakers. So is there any intention to look at a different provider? We live on the lake, and the weeds have, even after treatment, every single time after treatment, there was almost no reduction at all. I'm in favor of this part.
Anyone have an answer to that? Yes, sir, if you want to please?
We currently use Solitude, but going forward, I think we're gonna competitively bid. I think we do now, but certainly going forward, we'll do so. And I think at least for the milfoil, you'll see much better results if you use the Procellicor.
Good. Anyone else? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Article five, to see if the town will raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sum of $44,000 to pay the sick old land loans or take any other action relative thereto. I believe this is gonna be just a raise and appropriate, not a transfer. Do I have a motion to raise and appropriate? Second? Any questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article six, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow a sum of money to pay the following prior fiscal year invoices or take any other action relative thereto. It's the Highway Department, Maravito Energy Products, $1,171.12. This will be a raise and appropriate. This will require a nine tent vote here. So any question? First of all, any of the motion? A second? Any questions? All right, we'll try this before we even... All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, unanimous. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer $45,000 from the Capital Purchase Stabilization Fund or from available funds to raise, raise and appropriate. That would be correct. Raise and appropriate, right, instead of transfer? Okay. To purchase the equipment, to equip a police cruiser, including all costs incidental relative thereto, or take any action about thereto. This is gonna be a raise and appropriate, this is not a transfer of funds. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Do I have a second? Do I have any questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes. This next one will require a two-thirds vote to see if the town will vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws, section four, 7.4, titled signs by adding a new subsection 7.4.4 as follows. These provisions shall not apply to signs, signal, and devices used for the purposes of, for the purpose of works, zone safety, for road and traffic hazards, or for those reasons permitted by town policy concerning use of information dissemination devices, I P D, such as portable, changeable message signs, P C M S, or take any other action relative thereto. Could I have a, first, I have a motion? Do I have a second? Do we have someone from the planning board we'd like to just explain what this is about? Would anyone like an explanation?
Yes.
Okay. Is someone...
Can I speak? Hello, at Ward Hall Meeting. So this is basically just to ask them for a bylaw, so it's not in conflict with any other regulations set forth by Massachusetts, just to allow us to put up, like, you see, if we got a road closed for a construction project, or if we have to put up a traffic control sign saying, something along the lines of, you know, workers, they had, now, all it does is makes it so we're not in conflict with other laws that are already set in place by the state.
So there's a, this, this has not come before the Plating Board, correct? Therefore, we can vote all in one on this, but the Trinity General's not gonna allow it, because it had one to the Plating Board. So my recommendation is that this be a definitely postponed until you go back to the Plating Board and be voted on, and have, and be discussed, and have a hearing if needed. So do I have a motion to indefinitely postpone?
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second up there? Any questions? All in favor of indefinitely postponing this article? Any opposed? None. Okay, as Tina says, indefinitely postponed. Article four, to see if the town will vote to, this is gonna be raise and appropriate, $80,000 to the Highway Department Road Improvement Account for road work on the old county road intersection and all costs incidental relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article ten, to see if the town will vote, transfer, this is gonna be $30,000, well, we're gonna say $10,000, we'll have to amend it to $30,000. $10,000 from the General Stabilization Account to the Tree Warden Expense Account for tree removal or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? I know we're gonna change this, we're gonna say that this would be moved at the town to raise and appropriate $30,000 to the Tree Warden Expense Account for tree removal and all costs incidental relative thereto. There's a lot of trees that need to remove, and there's money available that we can use to accomplish this this year. So do I have a motion for the $30,000?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Any questions?
James Whalen, 65, Cherokee Road. Just what is the current account balance in the General Stabilization Account? I don't feel the budget, I could, thank you.
Do you have a...
Balance.
Balance.
About $5, $6, $7.
I see, okay. This is gonna be a raise and appropriate, by the way, this is not coming through from
Ann Hall, 50 Sturridge Road. What happened to National Grid? They used to come through and do a lot of tree work. Has anybody been in touch with them and, you know, asked them to come back? It happened years ago, they used to come through and cut so many trees. Anybody know?
I know they just...
I could kind of answer that question for, for you. I was gonna talk about National Grid in particular, I mean, Brian, that was more about in the town, but I do know last year, I was living in Wales, and National Grid did come through and do a lot, I believe it was, they told us about $200,000 worth of work. If they came through Holland, I would expect they did, because they did the general area, I thought they were in the field as well, but I can just, just from my own observation, I can tell you that.
What we did have, I know they had sent more than tree through, to clear out trees. It is the tree warden here. There he is.
Brian Johnson, 61 Stack Road. So so far, National Grid's probably taken down over 300 trees. They worked on North Wales and Nashport, because that's the main primary in town, but they're so overwhelmed with their budgets that, I mean, they are gonna come back, but I mean, they're doing the best they can do right now with their budget. So, but they have taken down over at least, you know, a ton of trees in town so far, but we are working with them. But there's a lot of town trees that they're not gonna take responsibility for, that we have to take responsibility for.
Yeah, same example, right now, you're gonna work down on Maple, and I believe there's trees down there that have been taken down as part of the project. Any other questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes, $30,000. Okay. Article 11, to see if the town will vote, this is gonna be raise and appropriate, $50,600 for the Fire Department Equipment Account for firefighter turnout here and all costs incidental relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Any questions? Bein none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, $75,000 for the purchase and equipment of a ball wheel skid steer vehicle, including all costs incidental relative thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? No motion? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Any questions? This has been, this is not recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Board? Is that correct?
Why? No.
Is there a reason for, yes, Brian?
Brian Johnson, 61 Stack Road. We put this article in at the time because we thought we had more free cash, and after working with the Finance Board, we thought, because we didn't have the amount of money, so we're gonna wait on this, so, for, we're just gonna wait till we have the money to buy.
Do you want to make a motion to indefinitely postpone?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to indefinitely postpone? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All, you have a question? It's quick. All, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's indefinitely postponed. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, $2,300 for a desk for the town clerk's office and all costs incidental and relative thereto. Do I have a motion? I know this was not recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Board, so no motion. So move, any second? I have a second. Is there a reason why this is not being recommended? Can you use the microphone, please?
It was our belief that $2,300 for a desk was excessive.
And also thought it was inappropriate to go that route at this time, wait for the ATM.
Good.
Ann Hall, 50 Sturridge Road. I asked Jennifer...
Pass through the mic.
I asked Jennifer about this in particular, and she said that documents are not being locked up in the town hall, and she needs a desk to lock her documents.
Hello? I'm the town clerk. I'm sorry if you misheard me, Ann. I said that documents are not able to be locked into my desk. I currently have two used and very old desks. I do need to utilize two computers simultaneously, and they cannot fit on one of the desks. They are on opposite sides of the office, and it makes a lot of work much harder and less efficient. All documents are locked in filing cabinets, fireproof safes, and everything, but if I had a lockable desk, which I do not, I would be able to keep documents much closer to me that are used on a regular basis. This would help flow of the office and the general morale of the office, which I think is very important. While I do understand the cost is large, to have a desk delivered does cost money, and to get a desk with locking drawers is an expense. So I ask for consideration because it would help with the workflow of the office, and it has not been done in probably more than 10 years. The town clerk has been dealing with two desks without drawers that long, and it's not really adequate. So that is why I request it, and I thank you for your time.
Any other questions? All in favor of the $2,300? Any opposed? I'm gonna need a count on this, it takes like... All in favor, hold them up, please. Is, we are, we have one over here on this side also. How many?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Fourteen? Okay. All opposed? Hold them up. We have some in the back here that you folks will be counting over there. Eight. Then include them all, and add them. Twenty-nine, yes. Twenty-five, no. I have a request from the Planning Board to make a motion to act upon all the articles, Article 14 through 20, as one vote. The reason is, they want to indefinitely postpone it, they're not ready to bring this before the, for a vote yet. So rather than this going article by article, they want us to just group them together, and then we'll be voted on indefinitely postponing. So do I have a motion? Wait a minute, let me, do I have a motion to act on Articles 14 through 20 as one vote? Motion. Second. Any questions? All, I have one question.
Paul LeBron, 48, Forest Drive, Holland. By postponing it, what does that mean? Does this mean that they can, when they, can they bring this up again? Because it was brought up and really voted down just a couple of years ago, and, yeah. So when you say postponing, for how long?
They can, it'll be brought up. Tina, what is the intent? Could you use the microphone?
Let's go forward with it, we will see what happens. I didn't hear you. Right now, there is no intent to go forward with it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's no attempt to go, to bring it back up again? I feel like we should probably just vote on it. I know a lot of us with the Lake Association came specifically for this.
Any other questions? All in favor of voting to act on Articles 14 through 20 as just, as one vote? This is just a grouping together right now. Any opposed? So that motion passed. Now, if there will be a motion to indefinitely postpone Articles 14 through 20, do I have a motion?
To move.
A second? Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes. It says, who's opposed now? Excuse me?
Do we go down?
You don't, uh... We, uh, that was... I mean, it was a failure, it was a majority vote, but...
I see.
Excuse me?
I see.
All right, all in favor, we'll count them. Make sure you get everyone up top of, right here, too. How many? Did you get it?
Thirty.
Oh, you counted two, thirty, okay. How many?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. One. How many?
Six.
Six. Forty-four, seven, no, it passed. To indefinitely postpone. Okay, we're gonna go all the way up to Article 21. This will require a two-thirds vote. This will require two thirds vote. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Holland zoning bylaws by deleting Section six point one one and adding Section seven, seven C, medical adult use marijuana, establishing standards for citing of medical marijuana treatment centers and marijuana establishments in the Town of Holland, or take any other action relative to... Do I have a motion to waive the reading of the remaining portion of this, this article? I have a motion, but I have a second to waive. Any questions on waived it? Yeah, the reading of the article. All in favor? And opposed?
Dorothy Garance, twelve Brandon Street. This has a lot of information in it, and I think it's unfair not to read it to everyone because there's many items in there that may concern many of you, so I think it should be read.
Anyone else? All in favor of waiving the reading of the article? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. So, why do we do this? Just take a few minutes and just look through this. I had asked you four, Fred, would you just take a look at it, or would you just take a look at it? And then I will be asking someone from the planning board to get up and give an explanation of this article, unless the need for it.
I do want to make one comment. On page twelve, this number two, commercial districts exempt from must seek planning board approval, that should not be there.
Will we make a motion to, to take that out? That's at the very bottom. The bottom of page two, where it says, "To Commercial District Except From Must Seek Planning Board Approval," that was a, a typographic area that should not be put in.
What page?
On page, the very bottom of page two, where it says, at the very, uh, twelve, excuse me, the very bottom of page twelve, where it says, "To Commercial District Except, Except From Must Seek Planning Board Approval," that portion, that little sentence is gonna be removed. Okay, D, D two.
Page eleven, middle of page.
Page twelve. Under, underneath page twelve, at the bottom, Section D says location, and this group requires...
You've got a different numbering system. Article, page eleven, center of the page.
Oh, okay, sorry. Page eleven, you said?
Center of the page.
Okay. I have a different version. Well, at the very bottom, under Section D, at seven C point oh four one, D two, that sentence, that the two sentence being deleted. What I'd like to add is the, someone from the planning board, give an explanation of the, this article, what it's all about, its need, et cetera.
Bettina Schmidt, three Mayburg Road. I'm on the planning board. The reason this article was written is because we have no articles, we have nothing to control anything being added to town. Should we not pass this? Anybody wanting to come into town and do anything, can go to the state, they will get it, and we will have absolutely no control over it.
Could you please repeat? Can you take your mic?
Sorry. We have no bylaws right now regarding marijuana, growing treatment centers, anything. If we don't pass this, um, they can go, anybody wanting to come into town can go to the state, they will get what they want, and they can do what they want. We will have absolutely no control over it. The town will have no say.
But there's no one already set up to be growing or something like that, or...
No, there is not right now.
Alright, alright, thanks. Here's the bottom line. Bettina, did the planning board hold the hearing?
Did last night.
And did you recommend it? Do you recommend it?
Four, four, and one abstained.
It was held last night, and it was a, vote was four, far, and one abstained?
Yes.
Okay. So, we, we move to waive the reading, do I have a motion for this article? Just a motion. But a second. Okay, now we can get up for questions. If you want to get up and get in line, just say six feet apart, please. Name and address.
James Whalen, sixty-five Cherokee Road. What Bettina just told you is one hundred percent absolutely true. I was on the Spencer, the Town of Spencer Planning Board when the ballot initiative came through, and what year was that? I don't really remember at this point, but at the time, the state regs were being written, and planning boards were all given copies of what the state regulations were gonna be. It was through the Central Mass Planning Commission, Pioneer Valley, and they're fairly extensive, however, if a town does not adopt their own bylaws, whether you're okay with the distances, especially between points, um, as, as we, I'm a patient, Ronnie, but there's a five hundred foot from this, uh, from a straight line, from a certain point of view, which most, mostly was the most controversial point in any bylaw and experience that I've had. But, long story short, if the town doesn't adopt something, yes, the state will, will take over, and there's very little that we, as townspeople, can do about it. Just keep that in mind when you're thinking about this.
Davis, uh, again? Well, you're next in line.
Ernie Fancy, one Butterworth Road. I have a couple of questions. On, what I have is page ten, or under the Section C, it says, "Three or four medical marijuana treatment centers or marijuana establishments on the same parcel of land." I didn't see a definition of what medical marijuana treatments were. Are these commercial sales? And if they are commercial sales, I think the little three in Town of Holland is a little bit excessive. And the other question I have is about the setbacks and area. It says, "Allow in AR zone the following restrictions."
Were you reading that, sorry?
Page eleven.
Uh, it's my page eleven, and it's under D.
Yep.
It says that the average requirement must less than thirty-five acres. Road furniture two hundred feet, front setback of two hundred feet, side and rear setback of two hundred feet. It seems to me that with a setback on the side of two hundred feet, and only a furniture of two hundred feet, that that's not quite doable. Because you've got four hundred feet involved in setbacks, and you only got two hundred feet in frontage, so...
You can have frontage on the road.
You can have a pork chop lot. Very pork chop lot.
Pork chops had bones. Yes, sir.
So, reading through this before, I'm not reading through it at this moment, but five hundred feet from any recreational area, parks, one could read that it's all of our hiking trails. Which means that essentially, there isn't more than possibly two properties in all Holland that would be able to meet these criteria. Are we trying to exclude businesses from coming here?
It's a state requirement.
You should like, for Bettina.
And a second issue, if someone like myself who's a chemist wanted to start a laboratory, essentially, there's nowhere to do it, even if, there's no good reason why an establishment that does good, common good, brings in tax dollars, and would not have a sign, needs to be regulated in this way above and beyond what the state of Massachusetts already regulates. The Town of Charlton has much lacker rules than this.
John?
I'm a bit towards...
Name, name and address.
Excuse me, John Scott, ninety-seventh Sturbridge Road. I'm a bit torn on, on this, but it sounds like if the town doesn't want it, they can make the regulations so, so that it can't be done, if we have so, so many feet, and is that what we want? So, it's complex, and I'd just like more time. I'm not against marijuana, I'm not against having a place to grow it or research it here, but, um, there's other questions that, um, about what do we want in the long term? And maybe we could make it so difficult that it can't be set up at all while we have time to decide what we really want for the town. So, thank you.
John, if you could just wipe off the microphone.
Ron Seber, one-ten East Springfield Road. On page six, under definitions, part A, third line, it mentions other media. I, I presume that that means hydroponics. If it does, I have a concern about the disposal of the, the medium that the product is being grown in. It can't be dumped onto the soil. We don't have a, a system like other cities have, like polio, where it can go into a sewer system and be treated. So, that would be a concern that I have. On page fourteen, section four, you're talking about no insecticides, pesticides, or other chemical products can be emitted into the atmosphere, and then there's a word "and," it's an empty sentence. I don't know if something was left out, but my, my primary concern with the hydroponics is hundreds of thousands of gallons of material that may be reduced down to, say, five parts, ten parts per million, still getting into the soil and affecting the, the well system that we have here in Holland. Thank you.
Hi, I'm General Mountain. I'd like to answer a couple of questions. I've been at all planning board meetings, watching when they fashion this bylaw with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They really did their homework at Western Mass Towns, and they were able to cobble something together unique to Holland. The first thing is, the five hundred foot setback, that's cannabis controlled commission state regulations. The town cannot offer that. That's the minimum for schools, libraries, daycares, churches, parks, playgrounds, and recreation areas. I don't know where your hiking trail comes in, that's like a transient recreation areas, but on these large parcels for the cultivation, I don't know how many hiking trails go through the private property of those places. They're gonna have enough setbacks anyway. The second thing is, the waste, that's also on the forefront of all cannabis farmers, not just cannabis farmers, but any farmers. We deal with fertilizer, the waste soils and all of that, but the state, but very extensive in their regulations with these cannabis farms, hydroponics especially, recycling, filtration, disposal, buffer zones that absorb it, chakko filters underground, I mean, the science is there. It comes from places that have been growing it for years. So, I hope that answered your question. And as far as, if you do not have a bylaw in town, and somebody files plans that conform with the state, but the town doesn't like for any reason, then we will not be able to have any regulation. All it takes is someone taking a site plan to the building inspector and getting it stamped with a date. If you haven't done anything in a yes community, then you, you're stuck with what you get. You can't say anything afterwards. But I do know a lot of work went into this bylaw. Many meetings, grants from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and the Town of Goshen, Mass is where the bulk of this came from, and it was adopted by Holland. So, I hope that answered your question.
Sir, if you could just wipe off the microphone, please? Yes, ma'am.
Dorothy Garance, twelve Brandon Street, member of the planning board. I was the one abstaining down the vote, and the reason being is I have no problem with most of this. The only problems I have is in two places. It's on page ten, C, three or more medical marijuana treatment centers for establishments. It says not allow for more than three. I can't see why we can't regulate it down to one. For a very small town, and, I mean, to me, one's plenty, and the same thing for number twelve, that was the other reason why I abstained, is because, again, it says on number five on page twelve, not to C three, but to me, I think our town would do just fine with just one of these establishments, and all, all parts of this is fine other than that.
Do you want to make a motion?
I can do that?
Yes.
Alright, I'd like to...
One minute, one minute.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Monterey. My name is Jeffrey Blake, and thank you guys for having me here tonight. You gotta be careful because you can't go lower than a certain percentage of the number of all alcohol licenses in a town. So if you're gonna try to...
Where does it say that, sir?
It's in, it's in the regulations for the CCC. It's part, it's part of the state.
Can I see it?
Ah, sure, I can bring it up on my phone if you want.
Yes, please.
I mean, you, you can, you can do what you want, but you might get it knocked out by the aging. I'm, I'm just trying to, heads up, that's all.
Fair enough. But then again, so that means that like a place like Springfield that has like two hundred liquor licenses can have two hundred facilities for marijuana?
That's what the regulations are.
You know, we already know that, right? Because twenty percent of the...
You need the microphone? Do I have a motion?
I don't want to make a motion until...
I have the spoke, or you're waiting.
Yeah, I don't want to make a motion until he checks, because I don't want us to vote on something that's wrong.
Because if it's gone wrong, that's gonna get shot out, and everything we did here is for nothing.
Right, exactly.
Sir?
On the, um, three, what, what page were you on there? Page ten? Three medical marijuana treatment centers and/or marijuana establishments. You're gonna have a parcel of thirty-five acres or more to do a, hey? For instance, a cooperative grow in cannabis requires three different licenses or more. You have a cultivation license, you have to do testing, you have to do processing, you have to do packaging, you have to do transportation, all from the same facility, would have to acquire them same licenses. Plus, you've got a gentleman back here that might want to set up a laboratory and doesn't want to do it on thirty-five acres. He could rent space or lease space on the thirty-five acre parcel already in place. That's why they went, it's not like three dispensaries on one parcel, it's different aspects, because every single aspect of the cannabis industry is regulated and has a permit that goes along with it. That's the reason they put their numbers in there.
Now, I understand that, sir, that it's all regulated, but my concern is, do we really need three establishments in our town? I mean, do we need three treatment facilities? Do we need three dispensaries? I mean, I think... I mean, I think one would be...
A treatment facility doesn't necessarily mean taking patients and treating them, it can mean that, it also means...
Uh, excuse me, we're not arguing between talking to me. Okay, so only one end, we're not going back and forth. He's up here. We have trouble with Wi-Fi. There's no Wi-Fi. We have trouble here.
Okay, I hope that answers your question.
Yes?
Jennifer Motown Clerk, I am just kind of trying to be completely impartial, I really have no opinion either way. I just want to make mention of the fact of something like our internet, which is Cox, and we can't get anything else out here, so we want to be wary of only allowing one person to harness the power, so to speak. That would just be my one thought, not allowing three, maybe not, only allowing one. We want to make sure that we don't get stuck, so to speak, with one person doing a business and not having another, have another person show that they can do it better, or whatever, whatever have you. So, sometimes it's good to be able to allow only one person to do any type of business.
Sir? So, looking through the state of Massachusetts rules, I ask that we postpone this. I cannot find anywhere the 500 feet that is required. So, to put this in perspective, I'm in Diane's Restaurant, that the majority of that area that would be our commercial zone would not need these regulations. Any other questions?
Ann Hall, I was at the planning board meeting last night, and is Abby Johnson here? Alan? Oh, okay, because he said there was only a couple of properties that could even qualify for that, and that's why I brought the map, because there's a bunch of very large properties. I was in charge of mapping out the town for open space, and you can see, these are all parcels on the map, and there's numerous ones, so a lot of different places could qualify for, in my opinion, for marijuana reasons.
Anyone else? If not, we're gonna vote on this, we're gonna be a two-thirds vote. We are gonna, when we vote on this, we're voting as written, except for that on that page eleven, after D, section D, it says two, it says commercial district exempt from must-see planning board rule, that sentence is being taken out.
Didn't he make a motion post-bank?
Had you a motion?
He did, when he was up there.
He didn't make a formal motion?
I made a formal motion after my words.
Deborah Palmer, Cecil Bakers Road, I'd like to make a motion to formally postpone this vote.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I, any questions on postponing this vote? Is it gonna take a two-thirds vote? No? Jerry? Okay, all in favor to postpone this vote? All opposed. Do I have any counters on this, please? All in favor? Or postponing? How many? Nine? Eight? Eight. So, all opposed. We have one back here. Fifteen? Twenty-seven? So, we have seventeen for, forty-two against, it is not postponed. But we're gonna vote on the motion upon the article as written, except for that, the leash that we mentioned. All in favor? This is all, this is the vote in favor of this article as written, with the exception of that one sentence we had deleted, which says to, to commercial district exempt from must-see planning board rule. This, we'll need counters on this. All in favor? We already, we already had questions. We're now voting on the motion. He already went through that, sir. We're voting on the whole article as written.
Motion for questions?
Everything that's written on the section, Article twenty-one. Excuse me?
Can I just make a point of order?
Yes?
Bob Kevra, Union Road, I just want to clarify, in this bylaw, there's no requirement that there be three of anything. This just allows the planning board to act on a special permit. They could turn this down, they could act upon it, they could modify it. I think there was a misperception that anyone could come in and file for this. Am I right about that? This just establishes a procedure for an applicant, but I guess there's two applicants already in town, to come, hold the planning board, you're the... The planning board could turn it down, they could send it back, and I think it's a majority vote of the planning board. Am I correct in that? I'm just sharing that for everyone's knowledge. Is that accurate? Maybe through the town council?
Yeah, there's two people, so when I ask you, there's already two people that are planning on open, no places?
Sir, could you wipe the microphone off, please?
I know of some people that want to do it, but I haven't got anything from anybody. Nobody's come to us.
Sir, could you get up here? There's no... All, this is about to take a two-thirds vote, could I have counters, please? All in favor of Article twenty-one as written, with the exception of that one sentence? Hold them up and include the back up on the stage, please. Did you get the one that's up here?
Thirty.
Thirty? Keep them up, please. All in favor? Eighteen? Eighteen. That's forty-four, all against. Two?
Three.
Three? Forty-eight, four, for custom part, five against, it passed. Forty-eight, five. Forty-eight, five, two, nine. Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two, see if the vote, vote to amend the article, all zoning bylaws by amending the schedule of principal uses in section four, use regulations that leave references to medical marijuana treatment center, registry, marijuana dispensary, RMD, and off-site medical marijuana dispensary, OMD, and also by adding following uses, but take any other action related to... We have a table there, and we'll just see how this table goes. So, the table is as it is written here, number forty-eight, craft marijuana, cooperative, C-section, seven C, and it goes SP and SP. And forty-nine, marijuana cultivator, C-section, seven C, you can see the zoning districts. Number fifty, marijuana product manufacturer, C-section, seven C, you can see the zoning districts as written. Fifty-one, marijuana retail, C-section, seven C, you can see the, as written, zoning districts. Fifty-two, marijuana independent testing laboratory, C-section, seven C, zoning districts as written. Fifty-three, marijuana micro businesses, C-section, seven C, zoning districts as written. Fifty-four, marijuana research facility, C-section, seven C, zoning districts as written. Fifty-five, marijuana transporter, C-section, seven C, zoning districts as written. And fifty-six, medical marijuana treatment center, C-section, seven C, zoning districts as written. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions? Yes, sir? Anyone else, if there's gonna be any questions, you can please get up. So, looking at the map that was generously provided by you, can you tell me if any of those properties are actually agricultural or commercial? Because looking at it from here, to me, almost all of those look to be residential, which means we basically excluded almost every single personal business from starting guest support business. Patina, could you also give a report out on the, from the planning board that, on your, on this, and your recommendation? Could you give a report out on the planning board's position on this, and then also, then if you could answer that question?
Well, the planning board wrote this, so we obviously recommend it. Most of the property in Holland is agricultural. I don't know if anybody realizes that.
You both held a hearing, right? Last night, right? This was on the last night? Was the same, was the same vote before?
Well, we actually... Actually didn't have it as two separate, we had it as one, the two things together.
I see. Okay. Anyone else, any questions? This will take a two-thirds vote, then, no other questions? Would you have the counters, please? All in favor, please hold it up. Hand in... She, she said that most of the town is agriculture, was she said. Ma'am, if you want to get up to the microphone, please? Hold on.
Deborah Palmer, Cecil Baker Road, the comment that most of the property is agricultural doesn't answer the question, is there actually properties, and how many in Holland that could actually, are that are actually agricultural, that could do marijuana business? And my problem being that, you know, we are talking about, you know, raising taxes, we want more revenue, but we're trying to really exclude businesses, so the question is, where are these properties? And if we can't, if you cannot tell me where the properties are, I would motion to postpone this vote until everyone can be fully filled with information. Are there any problems? I mean, I'm looking at that, I think it would be easy enough if you...
But I can't tell you up top who might have, I mean, looking at that, which are agricultural, but I know, like, there's property on Stafford Road that's agricultural, there's property up on Unionist, agricultural. There's stuff over on, we know, Bidden.
Okay, but again, my question is, I feel like people are voting on not without all of the information. You're saying, yes, there's multiple agricultural, but...
When you vote on a zoning bylaw with a charter, it's for the entire town, you don't count out the lots, you just, it's identifying all potential agricultural, all potential residential, whatever it may be, that's what...
But, so, but what we're voting on was saying that all of these really can only be on commercial and agricultural lots.
With special permits.
So, so what am I reading here? Then what is it? N is no?
N is no.
SP is special permit.
Okay, so why, why do we need a special permit? We already have a bylaw. I'm just, I'm just confused, I want to be an informed voter, and I feel like I'm not getting all the information.
You're gonna have to come before the planning board to get a special permit to build.
Oh, I have no interest in starting a marijuana business, I just, I'm curious.
No, you'll have, you'll have to come before the planning board to get a special permit to build.
All right, thank you.
Do I get the microphone off, please?
The land in town that qualifies, there seems to be a question. Anne's map is a little bit, it shows a bunch of the lots, but it doesn't show them all. Anything behind the main roads, you have your house lots on the main road, they're usually two or three hundred feet deep, maybe a couple of streets wide, all of vacant land in town, probably. All of this land back here, all these big lots, there's all agricultural residential, they can be used for both purposes. You need thirty-five acres according to this bylaw. Commercial land in town, we don't have a lot of commercial land, it's over by there. The trucks dock used to be, the restaurant where they were dynamiting, all of the pit over there, Tony Grossi owns it, they're parking trailer trucks, it's in the south end of town right before Route eighty-four. They can do small lot subdivision-type marijuana industries, should they choose. Business district, you're talking around Carol and Reddick, Main Attraction, the print shop, those are all your business districts. I don't know how far it goes, as well as some places on Stafford Road. I hope that answers your questions about where can be built.
Can you wipe that microphone, please? Anyone else have questions? Me and Ann, we are gonna vote, we're gonna take a three, two-thirds vote, we have the counters, please. All in favor, please hold your hands up high. Oh, you got, we got one back here, twenty-nine. Seventeen? Seventeen. That's forty-six, four, all against. The two? Two against, forty-six, four, two against, pass. Article twenty-three, this is a citizen's petition. To, and I've got a email from the, what was that, the modified citizen's motion, it was, create an official position for, for a town conservation agent providing, and provide an annual salary not to exceed twenty thousand dollars per year for said position or take any other action relative to. The, the request from the conservation commission was to modify that slightly in that the Town of Holland Conservation, this is for, Town of Holland Conservation Commission is requesting funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in order to obtain contracted professional services and support as needed in the performance of the doing of a project or mission. Or take any other action relative to. So, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All right. We will need a funding source for that. So, from the conservation commission, do I have a funding source? Anyone from the conservation commission? Was this recommended by the select board or by Ann's board? No. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Dawn Kamay, Toon, North Leesia, and I am on the conservation commission. And my fellow commissioners asked if I would come this evening and address this meeting. It's rather lengthy, so I have to apologize in advance, but here we go. The reason we're putting this forward to the town, the reason for the amendment, is to give the conservation commission the ability to access professional support and oversight on complex projects without having the town create a position for this purpose. An abundance of time and energy is necessary for the commissioners to understand, oversee, and adhere to the regulations set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act. Over the past couple of years, the conservation has dealt with an increase in the number and frequency of larger, more complex projects. Properties within the buffer zone along Hamilton Reservoir are being upgraded and converted to year-round residences, and this has a huge impact on the Hamilton Reservoir resource area, as many of these upgraded properties are often within the flood zone. Dealing with stormwater runoff and sediment in our waterways has become increasingly problematic, as well as the need for compensatory flood storage, which impacts the entire town. The commission has also been dealing with an increased number... I'm sorry?
It was a hotline.
The mic was on by accident.
It was an accident.
Okay, I'm sorry. The commission has also been dealing with increased number of violations and the need to seek enforcement orders. All of this has increased the time needed for ongoing oversight with appropriate documentation. A professional consultant would be able to oversee the project's violations and report back to the commission, so that we can make sure that the environmental laws are being adhered to on a consistent basis. The amount of funding we are requesting will not exceed twenty thousand, and is strictly for professional consulting services. The commission will have the responsibility for submitting all the files and paperwork to the DDP, as well as monitoring and approving tree removals within the buffer zone. The number of tree removal requests has exponentially increased over the past few months, due to the number and severity of storms that we have experienced, coupled with drought and previous insect infestations. By improving the funds for consulting services, the town will be able to obtain a level of professional support for the Holland Conservation Commission that will allow the appointed commissioners to enhance and maintain the quality and health of our wetlands and surrounding environment. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Could we have a, would you like to make a motion, ma'am, to, would you like to make a motion to raise and appropriate a twenty, twenty thousand dollars, not to exceed a twenty thousand dollars for a contracted, as you were here before?
A contracted consultant?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I would like to do that.
Okay, so, this would read as follows. And the select board and the vice committee are in favor, if, since it's just not an annual salary, but a contracted, this will be for, how is it going to read? Do you want this to read now, Jeff?
Would this be for an annual amount every year?
The article would be to provide a contract conservation agent, and further to raise an appropriate twenty thousand dollars for said position or take any other action relative to. So, this is not to have a salary person, this is to hire someone outside up to the twenty thousand dollars to help out the conservation mission. So, do you have a motion for that? Do I have a second? Okay. Any questions, please come up. Yes, sir.
Just real quick, is this an annual amount that will be raised every year, or is this a one-time?
Well, this would be for this year, and they would have to put it on the town meeting warrant.
James Whale, St. Michael's Road, I would personally vote against this motion for this reason. If we're, if the, and I'm going to use my own experience, planning boards, conservation commissions, different boards of this type, if you're going to go for a professional service versus someone you're hiring, you can recommend and ask the select board to charge a fee to the applicant for this. So, I would personally like to save the town twenty grand and actually make applicants pay for their own inspections. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am, if you want to come up and adjourn, you want to come up and speak, come on, and adjourn your desk.
Can you answer to your question, the problem that you're having?
You're going to speak into the microphone.
The answer to your question, the problem that you're having, is that, as I was saying in my little speech, we are having so many more large and very complex issues coming before us on such a regular basis, that we would be really tying up everybody's time within the town and on the various boards in order to get things taken care of, to hire on a case by case, where if we just had this one go-to person, we could accomplish it very quickly, and it would help everybody get their projects done that much faster. We can, case by case, ask for the applicant to pay this, but there are many times that it would just be far simpler and far less cost, far more cost effective to have this agent at our disposal. Thank you.
John Scott again? One second. So, you're, you're correct, a lot of towns do that, and they have the ability to do that anyways. The town attorney just said that they can request that they develop a, someone coming in with a, said, said it's coming in with a project to pay for that, the cost, the cost to look at their project. John?
I'm in favor of the motion. I think the conservation people have had a tough job. I've heard arguments when I've been outside in their room, where people are trying to make, to demand things from them. And I think they deserve this, and I do like the idea that previous gentleman suggested, where a fee is charged to the people who are, need to come for the conservation work. But in the meantime, I'm strongly in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Ann Hall, again, I've been a proponent of this since the time I started on conservation. There were so many difficult cases, and what you do, you go to Mark Stinson, the DDP, to get answers. When we have a huge reservoir, it is our biggest resource in this town, four hundred and fifty acres of water. We live in the bottom of a watershed. It has a lot of different ramifications. So, almost every single town has at least a part-time go-to agent or something that has special training. What we do not need is all these stipends going for, all of these volunteer positions for people that might have private interests. What we need is an expert go-to that can answer questions right away. A lake oversight committee is asking for stipends. If you took the stipends from that, if you took the stipends from the conservation commission, these are all volunteer positions, that then that would be about half of the money, I think, or a third of the money required for up to for these, I mean, look at what's happening to our lake. Look at what's happening to our town. If marijuana comes in, we need a go-to that knows the regulations, that can put a stop to it, or say this is okay, and calm everybody down.
What, Ann, could you, Angie, just wipe down. Anyone else? Ian and I, we're going to vote on this. This is a majority vote. All in favor? And opposed? Passes. Article twenty-four, this is a citizen's petition, to see if the town will vote to provide a stipend of five hundred dollars annually to each of the appointed members of the lake oversight committee or take any, any other action relative to. Do I have someone from the, who, on, from the citizen's petition to make a motion? The annun, this is going to pass over? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Any votes? Good enough. Thank you very much.